The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order at 6:20. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, domination under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Anna Rump Clark, if we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Marshall.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols is absent. Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Lewis is absent.
Thank you. Next, we don't have a public hearing, so we'll move on to report of department officers, department heads, staff, and consultant. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through H and communications I through N.
Is there... All right. Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right. Next, we'll move on to F, which is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Please say your name and address, and each person gets five minutes to speak that wishes to.
My name is Sandy Pufall. I live at 740 Nicolay Boulevard, but I'm here for a different matter, partly for business. I'm part of the business leaders and owners, I have to say it right, it's Bloom. It's our organized group for downtown Manassia. A little bit later, we're taking on, I'm going to be talking about our Harvest Festival coming up, but I did make an error in the hours, so I'm requesting that we extend the hours, that this Main Street would be closed until 6:00 p.m. to allow for artists and crafters to have time to take down their booths and move stuff out, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak this evening?
Crystal Oaks, 388 Nassau Street, and also Winnebago County Supervisor District Two. And I just want to remind you that voting is August 13th, it's a week from tomorrow. Please vote no on the constitutional amendments, so that money in an emergency is not delayed when coming to local governments.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Sandra Dable Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I hate to take up so much of your time. I honestly don't know where to begin tonight, so I'm going to start with Administration Committee, because that agenda does not allow for public comment, which I've been asking for for a really long time. And I'm going to go from the bottom up. First, I'd like to thank Chief Thorne for recommending that the proposed resolution for the referendum be postponed. And I hope that the council also postpones it until you have further information as far as the police contracts go, as far as shared revenue goes, and that you then would have already gone through the budget process, and I'm hopeful that this council can find room in the budget to hire police officers without having to rely on a referendum. Item number two was the contract for assessment to services. That's a three-year council appointment. And traditionally, they have received quotes, whether it's Associated Appraisals, or I think there's Northeast appraisal, I know there was another one from Madison. I strongly suggest that you get quotes for this, because that's only the fair way to make a recommendation, comparing apples to apples, rather than just... This is a three-year appointment of the council, and it is your, I think it's your duty to look at all prices and all services obligated to perform for the city, especially after the recent assessment process that we just went through. And then item one, the development agreement between the City of Manassia and Nicolay Manassia LLC. From my understanding, this should actually be two separate agreements, in my opinion. Part of the project is within the TIF boundary. The school is not in the TIF boundary. When the TIF was most recently amended, two years ago, they included areas outside the TIF boundary that could be incorporated. The school was not added at that time. At that time, they included $140,000 to remove the large electric pole on the south side, there's still half of it standing, $200,000 for improvements to the Racine Street Bridge, additional amenities, those haven't all been done, and $17,000 for Anup Street urbanization. There was nothing listed for the school. I think it will be very gray to have a TIF amendment that includes property that's not within the boundaries and not called out unless you're going to amend that TIF. And if you amend that TIF, the Joint Board of Review has to meet, you have to have a public hearing, actually even the sale of the parking lot portion, because that's public property, that has to have a public hearing before the Plan Commission, and to my knowledge, that hasn't occurred. There's a lot of moving parts here, and I feel we're kind of putting the cart before the horse again by having the council approve it, and then staff will work on putting everything together. You're leaving the public out in this, and I'm thinking protocol-wise, it's very gray. I think as far as, again, the Nicolay School project, they're asking $300,000 in city assistance. I'm assuming that's for both projects. The school itself, the most current listing I saw, it's been reduced to $380,000. So I think what they're doing is looking to the city to pay for demolition. If the school is listed on the Wisconsin Register of Historic Places, you cannot use TIF funds for demolition. I don't know if it is, it probably isn't, but it's something that has to be looked into. Using the city for demo, I don't think is appropriate. And actually, the whole concept, I'm not opposed to having housing go there, but having basically six driveways entering Anup Street so close to the proximity of the roundabout with no terrace for snow storage in the winter is going to be a problem. I think that has to be relooked, I think parking has to be moved to the driveways need to come off of Oak Street and have parking in the rear. The way it's drawn up, there's no setbacks, it's basically duplex with zero lot lines. They're trying to cram 10-pound bag of something in a 5-pound bag, to put it nicely. So anyhow, that's enough about that, but I ask that you take your time, ask a lot of questions, and Sam, I don't know if he's here tonight, can explain it, but he's going to say it's rush, 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 we got to approve it, and I'll take care of it later. And that's not how government works. Government's slow. Quickly...
Your time is up.
Oh, well, see, that's why I asked for something on the Administration Committee, so then I have time to talk about common council items. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the first item? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive the common council minutes of 7:15, 24.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it passes. And next, we'll move on to Administration Committee. Item two, professional service agreement. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to recommend approval of the professional service agreement by and between the City of Manassia and MSA Commercial Plumbing Inspections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Oh, Alderman Eisenach.
I know we've talked about this a few times, but could we give...
Hold on a second.
Oh, it was working. Can we give a little background as to what changed on this for the gallery, please?
Alderman Eisenach, could you rephrase the question and who you're asking it to just...
I guess my question would be, could we explain to the gallery the changes of the agreement?
That's Director Schrader, who is not here this evening.
Okay. So what should we...
Well, that was why I was not sure if you were asking and reiterating, and I just with your mic not cooperating there for a moment wasn't sure what the hang-up was, but Director Schrader isn't here, so I'm not sure how to provide you answer to that question.
I just wanted the gallery to be aware, but that's okay.
Okay.
I'll just take it off.
All right. I could just give a really brief, basically what they're looking to do is raise the minimum plumbing charge from $50 permit to a $250 permit minimum. And I believe there's a calculation for anything above and beyond that, but they do need to raise that base charge, is what this is for, from what I understand.
And if I may jump in just briefly, this first item is for that agreement. The item below that is for the actual fee increase. The professional services agreement is for those commercial plumbing services that have since been delegated to the city. So in a nutshell, those two items are related, and thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great question. I thank you for answering. I don't know why, when you asked him like, change from before, but you meant literally the before one, so thank you, everybody. No, that's okay.
I didn't know how to read.
No, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item three, commercial plumbing fee. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee recommends approval of the commercial plumbing fee for the minimum fee increase from $50 to $250.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is item four, permit and licensing software. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you. The staff recommends the Administration Committee approve the permitting and licensing statement of work with Civic Plus, subject to annual budget considerations.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those... Oh, excuse me. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to some items from the Board of Public Works. Number five is a payment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to make payment to Yankee General Contractors Incorporated, contract unit 2024-08. This is Water Street Corridor Reconstruction in the amount of $228,166.25.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is item six, street use application. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to accept the street use application for Harvest Festival, which is Saturday, September 21st, 2024, between the times of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., with Bloom LLC in charge.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik.
As noted, it was recommended that we add two hours to that time. It's mainly for cleanup and pickup and those kind of things.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Oh, Alderman Grady. Sorry about that.
I was just going to ask the chief, that extra two hours, is that okay with your department for the police?
All right. Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to items from the Special Board of Public Works that we had just had. The first is a recommendation to award a contract. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. We just had a Special Board of Public Works meeting earlier today, and the board recommended awarding contract unit 2024-03, 03, to, for the Jefferson Park Improvements Contractors, and this amount is $1,432,229.70.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is item two, which is a payment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
We have another payment, this time for Callan and Gauze LLC. This is contract unit 2024-06, utility and street construction for varying projects for, throughout the city, in the amount of $261,645.29.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion?
Can I just add, if I may?
Yeah.
If I have a permission?
Absolutely.
Just to point out, the contractor for the previous motion was not stated, and I just want to clarify that that went to Northeast Asphalt Incorporated. I think it was just stated contractor, so I just wanted, for the record, to clarify that it's to Northeast. So my apologies for stepping in late on that. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik.
Yeah, and we had just had that meeting, and so I just figured we assumed...
I think it was written as contractor, so you're not going to read what was there.
Right.
Yeah, it did list anything above.
Thank you, Laura.
It was an error in how it was written up, because it was carried over. So that is our fault, but just wanted to make sure, for the record, that it says Northeast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the payment? Item two. Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Three is another payment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
This third payment is for Yankee General Contractors Incorporated. This is contract unit 2024-08. This is, again, the Water Street Corridor Reconstruction Project in the amount of $377,661.10. And then, of course, this is now our second payment. And Laura, you said, how far are we on this?
This...
On this particular contract?
Yes. So this one is, we have the storm sewer work done on Kenwood Drive easement area. We still have Whitman Park Lane to complete. Curbin Gutter is going up on Lucerne, if it not already complete, and the sanitary sewer work on Elizabeth Street.
Oh, this is for the Water Street Corridor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed...
Yeah, and...
Well, that is for the other payment that we are doing, so you can put that with that one.
And I just meant that their particular contract for just the shoreline part.
Yes, we are 25% complete with installation of the shore wall.
Right.
I misunderstood which contract we were on.
You did mention it in committee, and I, it just escaped.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Repella, did you second that?
Yes, I'll second it. I didn't know, ready?
I thought you did, I just wanted to confirm. Okay, thank you. So it was, motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Four is a street use application. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. This one is for Race the Lake on Sunday, and it's on August 18th, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., the Do Try Run Foundation Incorporated.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion?
As mentioned earlier, there were some minor changes over the Racine Street Bridge.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
May I add one comment to this, as you guys are voting, and feel this should have no factor in, just wanted to point out that navigation will also be closed, so that because of the Take-O bridge closure, we wanted to make sure that Racine was not getting opened during that timeframe, so the Coast Guard has been contacted and will be, will be keeping the bridge open to traffic only for that period.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And then five is the last street use application. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the annual Labor Day Parade, Monday, September 2nd, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is put on again by the Fox Valley Area Labor Council.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to I, which is action items, and the first item is accounts payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of July 12th, '24 through August 1st of 2024, in the amount of $1,754,318.6.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is item two, which is the application for a temporary Class B retailer's license. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the application for the temporary Class B retailer's license for Heckerod Prairie Hootenanny, September 7th, 2024, on hours from 12:00 p.m. through 3:00 p.m. at Heckerod Wetland Reserve.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just have a question concerning, why was a temporary Class B liquor license thought of or needed? If anybody has any answers to that. We've had the Hootenanny before, we didn't have alcohol served, so...
It's a retailer.
Director Sacko, would you be able to bring some light to that?
This is an annual event that Heckerod hosts, and they do serve alcohol at this event as part of the event, so therefore, they need to have a license for this.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah? Is there any other discussion? Alderman Grady?
Yeah, but the motion didn't say liquor license. It said retailer's license. I said retail, should that be changed to liquor? Or is that the same thing?
I can speak to that. Historically, this has been brought before council as a retailer's license. That is what it is titled by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, and that allows alcohol?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And then three is to accept some project funds from the community foundation, or, excuse... Yeah, is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I'd like to make the motion that we accept and spend Jefferson Park project funds, David L. and Rita E. Nelson family funds, the community foundation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik.
Just so you know. For some reason, this communication that came through, mine is blurry. I don't know why that is. I just had a look at hers, and I thought maybe it was just me at home, but you see it, right? Okay. Just, we're good.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is K, ordinances and resolutions, and we have one, Resolution 31-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the Resolution 31-24. This resolution is for, to approve the project for the Winnebago County Sheriff's Spirits Fund for local government allocation for the fire department.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Yeah. I'd like for the chief to just give us a brief, this has been an ongoing, long process, but we did receive half a million dollars from Winnebago County, and a lot of times, people want to know exactly what it is and why we received these funds.
Yep, this is part of the Spirit Fund grant that we were given, half a million dollars to replace our fire training tower over at Station 31. We, according to this agreement, we have five years to complete the project.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman Sevenik?
Nope, sorry.
No, that's okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is L, which is appointments. Is there a motion for both of them? Thank you. Next is L, which is appointments. Is there a motion for both of them together, individually? Alderman Grady?
I'd like to do them individually. And I'd like to have the council accept the appointment of Kaia Schneider as city clerk for the term of 8/6/24, that's starting tomorrow, through 4/20/27, as recommended by the City Clerk Hiring Committee.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Sevenik. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
I just want to let the public know that we did receive 22 applications. We did go through these, and I want the community to know that after a little time, we realized that the best candidate here was the person in-house. And I remember the first time we interviewed her, she applied for the clerk's position, and I'm so happy that she got the deputy clerk's position. She was hired afterwards, and she proceeded to further her, she's working on her certification, and that's almost complete, and there's, there's not a lot of people out there anymore that can fill these spots, and I think Manassas is very lucky, because we got a couple elections coming up here, and we have a qualified individual here that will, I believe, do a great job for us, and I'm thankful that she applied for this position, and I wish her the best.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if, all those in favor? Those opposed? It passes, congratulations. And then next, there's one other appointment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. At this time, Mayor, I'll move for your appointment of yourself. That seems funny, but, and thank you for stepping forward, though, for taking on this Fox Cities MPO Policy Board with the East Central Regional Planning Commission, for a term from 9/5/24 to... What?
It should be May 26.
May of 26.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, thank you. Next is N, which is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda, if you wish to speak. I'll throw the battery in quick, and just please state your name, address, and you have five minutes to speak.
There you go. Okay, thanks a lot for approving the bid for Jefferson Park. I'm really excited to see this project continue from, from the west end down to the east end, and again, we are moving from acceptable to exceptional. It's going to be a great project. Thank you to both the Public Works Committee and the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Just a few quick comments. Just to acknowledge that the special Board of Public Works meeting, there are two street use applications through the park board for the Autobrsky Runski and the Autobrsky Bike Ski that did not appear in the council packet, so those will have to come forward in your next council meeting, unless you have a special council meeting. I would like to congratulate the new city clerk. I appreciate that Alderman Sevenik brought up the number of candidates that applied, because that was my concern from the beginning, that we just don't look in-house, we also look outside. And that just proves that without doing that, you wouldn't know what qualifications there were. The other thing that was missing from the memo, and I'm assuming this will be discussed, is the salary range, because there is a range posted, and I think it should also take into consideration what is required as far as years of experience, and what is required as far as certification, and what is lacking. And I also wanted to bring up at this time, that this may be something that you consider changing in the municipal code, whereas when we have department heads that appoint their deputy clerk, or deputy director of public works, or deputy community development director, that the person who's doing the appointing must have all those qualifications in place that are required of their position before they are allowed to appoint someone without it going through council. In other words, what I'm saying is, if you have someone in that position that doesn't meet the qualifications, should they be allowed to hire someone that's even going to have less qualifications than they do? It's something to consider. There was something else, but I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank, oh, I know. The very last item on your agenda is items for the next meeting. The clicker here is where it says majority vote. Any of you are authorized to place an item on the agenda. It doesn't have to be tonight. You can, anytime before the agenda is prepared, any council member can place an item on the agenda. The last item tonight gives you the opportunity to bring something up to staff, say, oh, I would like an update on the Racine Street, I would like an update on Whiting Mill, I would like an update on whatever. And that should just be all you need to do. By voting on it, you're actually violating open meetings law, because you're voting on something not printed on the agenda. So I bring that to your attention. Years ago, it used to be called council directives, where a staff member could say, hey, by the way, we talked about this, put it on the next agenda. That's all you'd really needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, yeah, Alderman Sevenik?
Just real, real quick, just to answer a quick question, as far as salary and step increase, or, or the step, that's all been taken care of, and that was part of the agreement that, that's been taken care of already. It's just not something that's part of the motion. And then lastly, Mayor, just a reminder to the council that we have another special meeting, August 12th, Randy's very happy about that. The CIP presentation, which will be this, strangely, it's not here. It's at the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh Fox Cities, so I know people come to these meetings, and they may not be aware that the meeting is going to be there. And then lastly, I hope I'm not out of order, but I want to thank Alderman Repella personally. We did not have a quorum this evening, and I called him and asked him if he could please make the meeting. By the way, he just had hip surgery less than a week ago, and Alderman Marshall drove to his house to pick him up, and used, actually, Alderman Repella's car to bring him here. So, I'm telling you, I appreciate it. I know the mayor does, too, because the mayor called me at 4:15 concerned about this, and in my history here of over 30 years, we've never had a situation where there wasn't a quorum, and I didn't want that to happen on my watch. So, thank you again, Alderman Repella. With that, if there's no further business?
The only other thing is if there's any items for the next meeting agenda, and if not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
If there's no further business, I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
To the Administration Committee.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We're adjourned at 6:59 a.m. Thank you all.